And I will immediately call to order our regular meeting of the Delmar College Board of Regents at 1:07 PM. And we have a quorum established earlier for our workshop and we'll continue our business. I'm going to ask for a moment of silence, please. Regent Garza, would you lead us in our pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join us as we read our Delmar College Vision Statement. Delmar College empowers our communities to achieve their dreams. We are streaming this portion of the meeting on the college's website in real time with the exception of portions of the meeting that are considered closed session by statute. We do have an opportunity for anyone to address the board in public comment for items not on our agenda today. Do we have anyone? I do not see anyone to address in general public comments, so we are going to immediately move to our recognitions. And we're going to ask Ms. Lenora Keys if she would come up and do our first recognition.
Thank you very much. Board of Regents, it's my distinct pleasure to do this one today. This has to do with our Small Business Development Center here that's been at Delmar College for the last 30 years. And I'm going to recognize Ann Fierova. Ann, would you come forward? And Dan Corrus. Ann is our Director for the Small Business Development Center. And then Dan Corrus is our Dean of Workforce Programs and Corporate Services. Come forward, Dan. We're going to bring more. We're going to bring Ann's staff forward in just a minute. But I wanted to take a few minutes to share with you information on the Small Business Development Center and all that they've accomplished and really what comprises this whole facility and what's been going on here. Our Small Business Development Center is basically funded by the state of Texas and the United States Small Business Association through University of Texas, San Antonio, which a lot of people don't realize that that affiliation takes place. And then, of course, the City of Corpus Christi Type A/B Business really contributes every year now significantly. And Delmar College hosts this. But first and most of all, June 1st was Ann's 30th anniversary with Delmar College and leading the SBDC. I just felt like that had to be celebrated, right? Because all the growth, I'm going to share with you what's happened under her leadership. And this is just last year, okay? The SBDC, working with small businesses last year, obtained over $9.4 million in capital investment and created 39 new businesses and 208 new jobs. We've added Apex Accelerator, which previously was known as PTAC, which is the Procurement Technical Assistant Program, which assists businesses with bidding with governmental entities. And they created over $254 million in contracts, with 3,986 contracts themselves. Huge. And then we also have the Contractors Resource Center, which was added just a few years ago. And that supports commercial contractors, plan room, et cetera. And it really helps all your commercial contractors, many small businesses, to bid with big industry and big business, which is huge here in town. And they work with over 166 clients for $1.5 million in contracts. We also added just two years ago, the Cyber Center, which assists small and medium-sized businesses with cybersecurity practices, which, as you can understand right now in this day and age, is extremely important. And small businesses have very limited resources normally with this type of support. And they have over 22 active clients. And then we have the Internship Program. And this is totally funded by the City of Corpus Christi Type A/B money. And this last year, up until this point, they had spent over $130,000 and placed 90 interns in over 75 local businesses. So I think this gives you an idea in one year what this team has accomplished and what amazing work it's been under Ann's leadership. And of course, Dan, too, took them over the last few years ago. But Ann, with over 30 years, we're right at 30 years, tremendous. And I have to say, she and I have got to work together all this time. So I love this part. Okay. Now then, the specific award that they're being recognized for today is happening on May the 7th with the District National Small Business Week event for the SBDC. Ann and Dan's, under their leadership, they received the Eagle Award. This award is given to the resource partner that submits the most nominations of small business and those then that receive recognition. And again, I want to reiterate is that the small business themselves moved forward so much and created so much momentum that the businesses recognized. But our team worked with them. This team nominated five local businesses and two received the district-level Small Business Administration Award. The Eagle is no stranger to Delmar College. We received it in 2019. And I want to repeat the quote of the district representative, what was, "The 2025 Eagle Award has come back to roost in Corpus Christi." And Ann, I'd like for you to introduce and bring up your whole team, please, that you want to recognize and say a few words.
Sure.
Everybody?
The whole group? Come, come, come. So the initial group that's making their way forward is our SBDC group. But I want the remainder of the staff to stand and be recognized as well because everybody else, Apex, CRC, Cyber Center, because we are one big happy family over here. We do have a group. And where one program leaves off, another program picks up a lot of the similar clients. There are clients that utilize all the resources we have available here between these five programs. And we're just really happy to see everybody's mantra as we want to see them grow and expand and do more for the community here in Corpus Christi. And every one of these folks around the podium here is a contributing member of that effort. And we couldn't do it without any of them. So I want to acknowledge them and all the work they've done on an ongoing basis, every day, day in and day out, with all the businesses that we see all the time. Altogether, I think collectively, we're over 1,500 businesses we touch with one-on-one advising in between all the programs every single year. So we want to just keep that effort going and raise awareness for the fact we're here to help both startups and existing businesses. We've got tons of resources to help those existing businesses get to the next level. And we appreciate all the support, obviously, from administration and the board to continue our efforts. So thank you.
Congratulations.
All right, group, thank you all very much. It's been great. Dan, Ann, all your team. So thank you.
Great job. And Lenora, you're going to do our next one as well.
Yes, thank you very much. I'm stepping in for Dr. Halcom. At this point in time, it's my opportunity to recognize our automotive program for seeking and receiving the ASC Program Certification. And I'm going to ask Davis Merrill's team, I think Davis may not be here, but Paul's here. This is Interim Chair Paul Creasy, Professor Duane Beadle, Instructor Raymond Wallace, and Dara Betts, who's the Director of our NCCR Certification Program. Do I have everybody else? Is Gary Griffin here? The National Institute of Automotive Service, which we know as ASE, the educational foundation, established the Automotive Program Certification in 1982. And this organization continues to serve as the integral role in the accreditation and certification process. They partnering with industry and higher educational entities to certify automotive programs. Our team here started this certification, what, two years ago?
Five.
Five years ago. Okay. Y'all persevere, so thank you. And kept going to really elevate the standards and the equipment that were in our automotive program. And this certification truly exemplifies their dedication to the curriculum and making sure that it totally represents that our automotive industry wanted here in Corpus Christi. I know you worked directly with our local dealerships and put all this together. Dara was extremely instrumental in preparing the packet, which all went forward. But it's truly without our leadership of our dean, our department chair, and our faculty, you would not have this award here today. So they have received certification for the program itself and a plaque recognizing, and there's signage and everything else that goes with this. That certification is really outstanding. And without this, it really, put it this way, it really impacts our students who graduate and leave with this certification, that when they go out and get a job, that just states the quality in which they've received their education and their training and their hands-on work with the equipment that's been provided. So would y'all like to say something? Paul, in particular?
I think you covered a good bunch of it. I do truly want to thank Ms. Dara for her help with all the paperwork and putting this together. But there is only two ASE-recognized schools in our area, Delmar College and Kingsville High School. So it really does open up the door for the students when they graduate to seek that employment with the automotive partners that we have and we work with here in the local community. So showcasing that our automotive program is a nationally recognized program is a big benefit to the school and to the community.
Congratulations. Thank you so much.
I would just like to thank the team. It took a bunch of people to make this happen over these years and a lot of work. And, you know, it's a vision I had a long time ago for our program and for our students and the community. It helps everyone. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you so much. Great job. You make us proud.
Yeah, this is a big, major thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Lenora.
Thank you.
All right, we will hear our college president's report. Dr. Escamia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be brief. I'd like to begin with, on May 21st, I took part on the monthly CEO call with the Texas Association of Community Colleges. Again, we continue to keep the cadence of meeting monthly, at least by phone, and then certainly quarterly, as we all get together either face-to-face or electronically otherwise. So on the 27th, I'm proud to say I was asked to be the keynote speaker for the radio station KEYS 1440 Sports Banquet with Doug Kesterson, my dear friend and high school classmate and teammate, who is the voice for various sports programs around here in the community. And I was honored to have been the keynote to help celebrate the exemplary athletes, both men and women, from around Corpus Christi High School. So that was a lot of fun, and I appreciate them asking me to do that. And then just quickly, this is more of a kind of little commercial. On the 28th of this month, we had our Incident Management Training Team Meeting. As you know, we got a little ahead of it. June 1st starts, guess what? Hurricane season. Okay. Hurricanes aren't the only things we deal with, as you well know. But on the 28th, the Incident Management Team got together and conducted an annual training. They reviewed team roles, responsibilities, certainly hurricane awareness, preparedness to kick off the season and so forth. Chief White and Captain Garcia, I think they're both here. They were here, maybe not. Nope, didn't see them. That's okay. Are they? Okay. So they did, they began and they conducted tabletop exercises, has been asked about in the past, using hurricane scenario and so forth. On June 2nd, promptly, a college-wide email was sent out on behalf of the Incident Management Team. It contained pertinent information in terms of preparing, both personally and professionally. You know, we all start at home. We all take care of those things, you know, batteries, flashlights, water, you know, contingency, contingency, contingency at the house, to whatever that means for you. And this is, this meeting was conducted as an overall, as a part of our overall Incident Management operations here at the college. That concludes my report. I'm glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Dr. Escamia? All right, seeing none, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, sir.
On the incident, on the hurricane preparedness, do you, do we work with the city's emergency man, the city and county Emergency Management Offices?
I have the answers to that, but I'm going to ask Ms. McDonald to formally answer those questions.
We are part of their briefings when the emergency management, before they even stand up their Emergency Management Team for an incident, we do get all the pre-briefings and we're part of the briefing. So yes, we are, we are part of that. And also, we are part of their plan because our dome on Windward Campus is part of their plan, that we turn over to the city where they do want to operate it. And so we do work very well and we do coordinate with the city. Yes, sir, Emergency Management Team.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any other questions? All right. We will move on to our staff reports. And we are going to start with Dr. Natalie Villarreal. We'll talk about our previous strategic plans. This is our final report on our strategic plan that ended in 2024.
Yes, this was aspire, engage, and achieve, which went from 2019 to 2024. And sometimes the challenges of reporting large numbers like this are because our data lags with the coordinating board, and we do have to wait for that information to get certified and published. So I want to give credit to our team under Sushil Palamoni and Dr. Sidney Zambi, because they keep us on track of all of the major data points that come in, even though they do tend to lag a little bit. And so a lot of times what you hear are the things that we're trying to do, what we're going to do, but we very rarely get to stand up here and talk about the major accomplishments of what has happened. And so I wanted to give you today just a brief overview of the areas of the plan and the positive outcomes that came from it, because there was a lot of hard work that was put into this plan. We had over 40 people on a steering committee who really worked the plan and made sure that it was incorporated into day-to-day. But of course, we know that we still have some areas of improvement. And you'll see that in the current plan, some of the areas that we've continued to discuss and decide to prioritize. But for the 2019-2024 plan, we used the SCUP model. It's a very, very basic assessment, right, of looking at your landscape, planning your roadmap, kind of creating that plan and evaluating the outcomes. And we felt like this was a good start to a very heavy data-driven plan. So what was great about this plan was that this was a really great time for the college to look at data in a really robust fashion. And so there were very, there were so many KPIs that we looked at, really important. And so I just wanted to highlight some of the areas, because again, there was some really great work done in these past few years. So we had Goal One focused solely on completion for all of our students, creating coherent and seamless pathways for all of our students to achieve their goals. And overall, over those five years, the college did see an increase for our credit student population to complete. Specifically, in our Hispanic and our economically disadvantaged students, we saw an increase in completion, but we also saw an increase from our first time in college, where we called those FTIC students, who are coming right out of high school or with a diploma or an equivalent to the diploma, and seeing them continue and to complete. So those were some really great numbers that I wanted to share with you. The other is time to completion. You know, a lot of our students are part-time. You hear us talking about how we're always, how do we get our students to finish faster, sooner, while also respecting the fact that we have students who do work. They have to work. They do, they have other challenges. They have, they're taking care of other responsibilities in their lives. And so through all that, we continue to work and develop strategies for that. So in those five years, we did, our time to completion did decrease to 4.8 years. You can imagine that all of our current strategies now continue to focus on that. Strategies, initiatives like our Freedom to Dream outcomes are working on or advising, our success coaching, all of those things you're going to hear about continuing on the current plan are things that we're continuing to work from Goal One completion of this plan.
Dr. Natalie, let me just jump in there, please.
Yes, sir.
I want to jump out of my seat and just leap for joy. That number going below 5, okay, that number 5.1, four years before this, was even higher. So the delta, the delta is, I want to say 5.3, 5.4, maybe something up in that number. That's prior to this 5.1 number.
Yes.
The years prior. So we've been pushing that number back. That is a major, major accomplishment for this college. We're not done yet. We know that number is going down. I'm getting the nods out there. And we know with the things that we have in place, that number's going to go down. But that 4.8 number is a, in itself, is something to be hugely celebrated by this college. So stay tuned.
So as we introduce more bachelor's programs, is that going to impact this number?
This is the two-year completion. So for the associate's degree, you know, so we'll monitor time to completion for that particular program in itself. But it, for us being a commuter college and to have shrunk it to get under the 5.
I'm on board, yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Well, and for this to have taken place during COVID, that's the other piece of it, is what would have happened if we hadn't had that big interruption in 2020, 2021, as we were coming out of COVID? Yeah.
Yes, our numbers looked very different pre-COVID in all sorts of ways. And so you're right, this is, this is us having to rebound during a pandemic and try to get our students to success. Under Goal Two was recruitment and persistence. Now, with this one, this one was specifically looking at our first-time-in-college students. And, you know, we've had that debate of, does it include all of our students? Our FTIC students are a small portion. However, it is a way for the state to really compare us to our peer institutions and to kind of, it's a small gauge, but it still is a good way to show how we are moving forward from fall to fall. So when we talk about persistence, when you enrolled this fall, did you come back the following fall? And again, from 1920 to '23, '24, we did go up a few percentage points. And again, it may not look very large over past five years, but it really is significant when you look at the overall. Does anybody have any questions on our FTIC students? This one, our Academic Preparedness and Student Learning is Goal Three. So we talk a lot and we focus a lot on our students who need that extra developmental education when they come in. And so we did see an upward trend in our students in all three areas, math, reading, and writing, in their preparedness to move on to their regular credit courses, and they did it in a shorter amount of time. So again, we do have a robust committee that meets and works on these areas constantly for improvement. Dr. E, did you have something to say?
That's another wonderful benchmark.
So again, in these three different areas, there were so many key performance indicators that were studied and were looked at year over year to ensure that we were moving forward. And in most of these areas, we did have some significant growth, and we're really proud about that. Under our learning environments, we took a different approach in how we used our data. We used looking at our full-time faculty pay through the state. We also used some of our federal data with our Clearing Act and the Violence Against Women Act. And then we used our compensation rates to show where we were again compared to our other peer institutions. And all of these were very positive, on trend, as to being on point with moving forward with the college and keeping our learning environments productive for our students. Goal Five, we pride ourselves on workforce development, our community partnerships, and our advocacy. That's something that you hear us talk a lot about. When we look at our workforce post-graduation numbers, those continue to always be above and beyond, and especially with our peer, against our peer institutions. So we're very proud of that. And then also the job placement data. That does change from time to time, given, again, our current information as we get from the coordinating board. And like I mentioned, Sushil and team are always trying to, as soon as we get data, plugging it in and seeing where we meet. So some of that job placement data does lag a little bit behind, about a year or so, but we are pretty fortunate to be able to see that we do continue to move forward in Our financial effectiveness and affordability. One of these items, we have continued into the current strategic plan, which is maintaining our tuition and fees. However, we do know right now with the state, we have been asked to freeze our tuition. And so those are one, that's one of the areas that we might have to modify. But we have always been within alignment within our regional and economic area. And our tuition and fees compared to our peer institutions, we've always been very reasonable and affordable. This is a list of many of the strategies that our faculty and staff implemented over the five years. You've heard about our Strategic Enrollment Marketing Plan and how we continue to refine that. Financial aid, putting our financial aid guides in Spanish. Again, talking about the Delumental Education Committee. It's quite a robust group that's always looking at all of our data and how we can improve for our students. And again, there's so many more things that we do here, but the key is that a lot of these things are working and we're continuing to move some of these initiatives and groups These are the areas that we know that we're going to need to continue to work on. So when we look at first-time graduate, first-time-in-college students, we look at a whole bunch of different data points. We look at three-year data, four, five, six-year from them to complete. And we know that, again, that is something that we need to continue to work on. Our excessive semester credit hours, we're still always working on trying to ensure that our students, again, complete in a timely manner. And what are we constantly doing to evaluate that? And then we have the Texas Success Initiative Assessment, the TSI. That one, constantly working with our ISDs in partnership to ensure that the students that are coming to us are ready, they're college-ready. And then I'll add our scholarships with the Delmar College Foundation. You get to hear about that from Matthew Busby. And it's something that we continue to work on, and our numbers of our numbers of students who've applied continue to grow, and we're especially proud of that. So that's just a little bit of the continued work that you're going to get to hear about as we continue moving strategically. And this was just a thank you again to the group. Data is their passion. They live for it, and greatly appreciated for all the work they do on our behalf at the college. Does anybody have any questions on 2019 through 2024?
Thanks, Dr. Villarreal.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, so we're going to hear now an update on our Freedom to Dream Tuition Waiver Program. Dr. Patricia Benavides Dominguez, Ale Calad.
Caladuz.
Caladuz. I haven't said it in a long time. You haven't presented in a long time, Caladuz.
Been a bit.
And Sushil Palamoni, you're going to present.
Good afternoon, Regents, Madam Chair, Dr. Escamia. We're very happy here to prevent, pardon me, provide you an update on our Freedom to Dream Tuition Waiver update and some of the data elements that have been mentioned in our prior presentations. I'm joined by my colleague in arms, Dr. Benavides Dominguez. Before I get started, I do want to take a brief moment to provide some much due credit to the folks in the background who don't have the opportunity to be up here before we even present. Mr. Ralph Gunan, Mr. Steven Maddox, Joel Sullivan on the IT team, Gracie Martinez, Stephanie Salazar, and our own Dr. PBD have put in.
Mr.
And Sushil, of course, pardon me. A lot of effort to not only get the data to a point where we're comfortable presenting it to the board, but making sure that we can utilize that data to move this tuition waiver pilot forward. So today, we'll talk to you briefly about what the Freedom Dream Student Funnel looks like, how we move these students from prospect all the way through graduation and get them out into the community in a job. We'll take a deep dive on some Freedom to Dream data, and then we'll talk about what's next for the program in the coming years. So I'd like to share with you just a overview of how these students move through the Freedom to Dream Program, starting as a prospect. Earlier, you heard mention of the Customer Relationship Management System, or the CRM. This is a system by which students are able to apply for entry into the program, express their interest, and how we process all the incoming students. College Visions and IT process this information against our student information system and determine their eligibility for the program, their declared majors and so forth, and assist them in registering for Fall 2025 classes. You'll notice this process in the second portion occurs on a daily basis, so we're constantly monitoring and updating that data. These students then move into the standard college process by which admissions is moving them through, assigning them for advising. A very key, important point for us is they sign the acknowledgement agreement, showing that they have some skin in the game, they understand what the expectations are as they make their way through the program. And then for those students that either didn't qualify because they were out of district or maybe have excessive hours, that CRM also allows us to set up a feedback loop. So we can now market additional opportunities to those students who didn't qualify for Freedom to Dream. So we're deriving multiple benefits from the tie together of these systems. Students at that point are then passed off to another program to get into an advising appointment and given some detailed instruction on how they can begin their journey. The semester starts, Fall 2025, and they'll begin their academic work. And one step I'd like to point out, which is the very end, and you'll see it again when we go to our funnel on the next slide. This cohort is gonna get tracked throughout their entire journey to see not only did they register, but did they complete and get a credential and get out into the community? And this is something we'll report on on a semestral basis. And our goal, of course, is three years, 100% completion for all of these students. So I'll pause here to see if anyone has any questions on the process of these students navigate. All right, this is a snapshot from the dashboard that Dr. Escamilla mentioned earlier. Okay. These numbers are as of June 6th on Thursday, and we have some fresh numbers as of this morning that I'll share with you briefly. So as of the 6th, we had 3,189 students that had submitted interest in the program. And at that point, 178 that had actually registered for Fall. There's a couple of steps between declaration of interest for the program and then registered. And the graphic to the right kind of shows that funnel that we mentioned earlier. So we go through an approval process to vet the students, and that's that first bar, inquiries approved for Freedom to Dream. And then the students are assigned the acknowledgement and then a list of tasks they have to complete, just as any other student applying for the college would have to go through. Once that acknowledgement is signed, they move to the next stage of the funnel. That's where they're assigned to an advisor, provided a guidance on what they should register for, college programs and so forth. And then the last step is to register for Fall of '25. Now, as of this morning at about 9:30 a.m., that first bar, the inquiries approved for Freedom to Dream, we're at 1,621, 765 acknowledgements pending, 881 acknowledgements signed. And then out of that group, we're up to 210 students registered for Fall of '25. So every day we're adding 10 to 20 students, and that seems to be accelerating as we get closer and closer to the summer. So that's that's really promising.
We're working up.
And yeah, that's exactly right. And now I'm gonna pass it over to Dr. Dominguez for some detail.
Okay, so this slide provides an update for the latest cohort results for the students coming into the program. As you can see of the students that have been processed, the top trending majors continue to be nursing, industrial, technology and liberal arts. Please note that that last metric, 35, where it says dual-credit graduates with prior credentials, at first, like it it was blank, or the, it didn't say dual-credit, it said blank when when we see the this this dashboard, right? So I asked my registrar, can you run down those 35 students and tell me what what's going on with them? And she says, well, Patricia, all these students graduated in May with a credential. Primarily, they were certificate level-one completers. And so they're, when you graduate, we end your your major. And then in the fall, if you're still enrolled, you get you get a new program of study that you're pursuing. So that's just a, I found that to be a good fun fact that Lenora said we should share with you. So. This next data point tracks what majors students have declared on the Apply Texas Admissions Application. As you can see by the breakdown, 62% of the students are interested in pursuing a transfer degree. The remaining 38% intend to pursue a short-term program of study and will graduate and more likely go out into the workforce. This slide depicts the top trending high schools. CCI SD high schools are trending the highest. This slide, we changed it just a little bit and provided more detail. The student profile merging is showing that most students are coming in with no hours as of today. This tells us that we have a mix, that number tells us that we have a mix of high school students and non-traditional students that did not do any dual-credit hours while they were in high school. The other smaller percentage percentages tells us that they're dual-credit students matriculating to Delmar. We realize that many of these students coming in may have no hours, and we are preparing to outreach to these students so they're aware of all our wraparound services at Delmar. And many of them are slated to come tomorrow for our free, our orientation. And we also have waiver Wednesdays for the Freedom to Dream on Heritage and at Winward. And so we are outreach to these students weekly.
Patricia?
Yes, ma'am.
Go back to that slide. On the zero-hour students.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have a sense of how many are the recent grads with no dual-credit versus an older student who's coming back?
We know exactly who they are, but I can't tell you out of that.
That might be interesting because it's such a big number.
Sure.
To create that subset that says, these are X number of 25 high school grad.
Graduates versus non-trads.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we'll do that for you the next time.
Sure, I think that's really important information for us to understand and communicate that while we were thinking about this as a high school dual-credit program, it has become something.
We might, we might have something right now. Gracie, go ahead.
60% of them are high school seniors without any.
But 60% of them are high school seniors without any credit.
So 400, so we have approximately 400.
Or non-trads.
Non-traditional students, returning adults.
That's a, that's a big number.
That's 25 years.
That's much bigger than I was gonna say.
Yeah.
This is a good thing.
That's.
Well, one of the gentlemen at the signing ceremony is an adult who's coming back. I think I'm gonna get this right, wants to be a surgical tech. And his son was graduating the next week from Carroll High School, and he was working on getting his son to fill out the paperwork. So there's potentially a father and son who could both be coming to Delmar College. Like, give me his name, I'll call it. I'll get on that kid.
Can we, can we get them like t-shirts? I think we should have like a special t-shirt for those combos.
All right.
That's a good, that's a good story. This next demographic, this slide is a demographic slide that shows the gender and ethnicity breakdown for the Freedom to Dream students. Females remain the highest connecting with higher education. I love to mess with Ali a lot. So the dashboard images that we've shared with you today are updated daily and are used by our faculty, advisors and staff. We plan to take this version to scale so that departments can access their students by major and various student populations, such as the one that you see on the screen. The CRM allows us to track students from the beginning of their journey all the way up into HB8 completion. So do we have any questions?
So you're gonna scale this up to all interested students, not just Freedom to Dream, and then be able to do the specialized follow-up with all of them? That's incredible. Jeff's back there just grinning away.
That's what that CRM.
We've been talking about this at this board table.
For a long time.
For 11 years, getting to this point. Because managing those, we can do the individual one-offs. You can have lots of anecdotal stories about helping students along, but really scaling it up to all of our applicants, all of our interested parties, not even applicants, but all of our interested parties is.
This goes back to shifting our resources towards marketing and sustaining those because it becomes a different way, Regents, that that really do touch them individually and customizes those, 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 those applications. But it's gonna take the resources that are on the table. So it's a shift. It's not necessarily a reduction altogether. It may be a reduction and a shift of sorts, but but those resources are gonna be necessary for these types of things. And so it's a whole different way. It's a whole different way to communicate that I'm still learning for sure. But the team knows, so I gotta follow.
Thank you.
That's incredible. Other questions or comments from board members?
So we were shooting for 500. We're already past that by 300. But we, we're only about halfway through.
It's growing daily.
Doing everybody, like running.
We're contacting them, yeah.
Yeah. What, so what's enrollment looking like for Fall?
So I've got.
Actually, better question.
We're at over 5,000.
Last Fall, what was our incoming full-time student count?
So from.
Last Fall.
Patricia, would you, would you present these, or do you have it with you?
Yes, I have.
Would you? I don't wanna mess it up. I mean, it's plain and simple right here, but I want Patricia to say.
So this time last year, well, today we're at 5,508 credit headcount. And we're up 19% from this time last year. So.
And that's not counting the people who have signed but have not registered, right? That's registration?
No, this is, out of this, you know, we have a little over 2,400 that are dual-credit. Out of this 5,508, and then 200 of those or 210 of those are Freedom to Dream in this number. Yes, sir.
All right. Great. That's wonderful.
Okay.
Other comments?
Summer's up as well.
Yeah.
Regular summer's up as well. Summer.
Summer one, we're up 13%. We're at 4,157. Our dual-credit number is at 760. Summer two, we are up 9%. We're at 2244, and our dual-credit number is 362. Headcount.
Thank you both very much. Thanks, Sushil. Thanks for the entire team. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. McDonald is going to do our regular professional contract review.
Thank you, Chair. This is our semi-annual review of our professional service contracts. So the last time we reviewed this was in December. So this is the activity between December and June. So we've added at the top in green, which means it's a new contract. We've added two contracts under Legal Services, which the board approved for Posnelli, and then Biggerstaff. So those are noted. And then if we move on, like, there's a cross, there's, there's a line through where it says General Facility Sue Cordley. She has retired and has no longer provides a service, so we are gonna be removing that next cycle. We just wanted to make you aware that we would be removing it. If you can go on up a little bit more. We have a couple more additions. So we have Spa Glass, which the board approved, because they will be doing the work on the Workforce Development Center in Aransas County, and then also the new contract that we have with Higginbotham for our property insurance. So those are the, all the changes that have taken place in the last six months. Any questions?
I'd just comment that on Sue retiring, we have an architecture professor who is who everybody in the private sector hires to do what Sue used to do. We're looking for somebody to replace him. They're already on staff.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Tammy?
I see all of these IDIQ contracts are, most of them are up in December. So I'm assuming that we'll be going through the process to RFQ and our RF, I guess it's RFQ, to rejuvenate this IDIQ.
Yes, that's correct. I'm in direct contact with Percy on that. And we've got a schedule lined up, so that probably in September we'll advertise that solicitation. Yes, sir.
And so we could probably see in December agenda item for approval of those contracts.
Yes, sir, that is correct. That's the time schedule we're working on. Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
All right, any other questions?
Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Rivera, let's talk about our Texas Opportunity High School Diploma Program Grant.
All right, just go ahead and queue that up. Perfect. Yeah, well, good afternoon, everyone. I'm super excited to be here to present the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board Texas Opportunity High School Diploma Program Grant. We were very fortunate to procure this grant this past spring of 2025, and I will provide the the board some information on the overview of the grant, the timeline of the grant, the grant summation, and finally, just the providers that did receive this type of grant. And you'll be surprised to know that we are one of very few colleges that received this grant. Five, one in five, exactly, sir. So as you could see on your screen, this was established by House Bill 8 in the 88th legislature to support the building the Talent Strong Texas Strategic Plan. It focuses on 18 years and older adults that are enrolled in a career technical education-type program here at Delmar College. The diploma requirements are met through concurrent enrollment in the competency-based education program. So while they're working on their diploma requirements, they also will be enrolled in their respective CTE or Career Technical Education Program of Study. There are five core competencies that were targeted in this grant program. And they are civics, communications, quantitative reasoning, scientific reasoning, and workplace success skills. Those were the, the core competencies that the state mandated that had to be covered in this grant program. The Texas Education Code establishes that the opportunity in high school diploma is equivalent to a high school diploma conferred by a public school district. So we are one in the same. So this is gonna be considered just what would, what a student receives from a public school. Ray, you know, one of our public schools here in Corpus Christi would be the same type of equivalent diploma, but they would receive it from Delmar College. And this program is fundable by House Bill 8 funding, and it's $3,500 per graduate, per diploma graduate. So. So here's a glimpse of the timeline that we have gone through. So again, 20, early part of 2025, January, the program grant solicitation was put out. And it was, we had some calls and such through the process. I wanna, I wanna pause for a moment because I'm gonna be honest, this grant would not be possible. Would not be possible had not been for one individual. And that individual is none other than our Dean Rachel Benavides. So Rachel, you wanna stand up and get a round of applause because she really put her soul into this program. And because of that and our hard work, we were able to get this grant awarded to us early spring. So I'm very, very proud of her and proud of the the efforts that have gone into this grant. And so as we've gone forward in time, we are now at the implementation side of this equation. All through this process, from the time that we were awarded, the curriculum development has been being undertaken. We were very fortunate, in the same vein, to have other Delmar faculty members that participated in the curriculum development of those competencies that I just mentioned earlier. And I wanted to just point them out, just to make note of them. Dr. Tammy Francis was part of this process. Ms. Corinne Caruso, part of the process. Dr. Angelica Gomez, part of this process. And also Ms. Rebecca Salinas, part of the curriculum development process. So again, they have been able to put in their feedback and developmental efforts into developing a world-class curriculum that is gonna be shared as a model for the state. And they're doing this in concert with the other colleges that were lucky enough to get this grant. The summary of this grant is as follows. The grant was for $333,000 over a 24-month period. So basically, it went from January 2025, and it'll end in next December of 2026. We will serve 50 high school students, programs that know cost to the students. And they will cover, program proceeds will cover curriculum development, as I mentioned, by our staff and faculty here at Delmar College. It'll pay for instructor wages for five part-time diploma instructor wages. We also pay for one full-time career navigator that will oversee the program and also for support services for students and also instructional software, training materials, marketing outreach and travel. Likely also, it also provides financial programming, quarterly reports to the coordinating board. This is part of the process on this grant that we provide progress reports every quarter to the, to the coordinating board. And then the primary goal is to determine if Texas can utilize this model for the entire state. And again, we're very fortunate to be part of this process to unveil this diploma program for the state of Texas in the future. And so as I mentioned earlier, we are one of five community colleges in the state of Texas to receive this prestigious opportunity. I've got assure you that from Dr. Escamilla's advocacy. I can assure you that from Dr. Escamilla's advocacy, to a lot of our respective board members, I'm sure, and others that push for us, we were able to be in the five selected community college group. And I can assure you, there were other colleges, and to be part of this group is, is really, really, just, just, it's an honor to be part of this group. So I want to make sure that we will certainly push forward and make this diploma program the best ever. And at this point, I want to open up any questions.
I think it's a great program. I have a question. You're getting the grant money, but then in the other slide, you said you're, you're getting $3,500 per graduate?
$3,800. It's under House Bill 8 funding. We will receive $3,800.
So basically, you're getting paid twice for this program?
Yeah, I, I guess in the first 24 months, we could be getting paid twice. But again, the, the monies that we receive are basically seed money to get us started up and rolling. And as we go forward in time, we will continue to receive, we might not, we might not get any more money from the state, but we will continue to receive the House Bill 8 funding, which is big, big, big.
And also certifications along the way as well. Other, other benchmarks. So it's not just the $3,500.
$800, yeah.
$3,800. It's, it's the incremental completions of certificates and so forth, so it'll.
Is this, was this kind of a pilot program? Because I saw something where he said that it was going to be looked at for implementation in the future?
Yes. So the state, in their infinite wisdom, they, they are, they looked at this as a way to bolster, I guess, workforce readiness. Because again, the, the key to this grant, it's, it's all focus on career technical education type programs. And so what we will do is, we're not so much going to, we're, we're going to focus in on the students that we serve here at the college. That they're going to be our frontline students that we serve. And, and so a lot of our students, we, we're very fortunate now that we have an adult education literacy program, otherwise known as a GED program, but now we have a diploma program. But they both will work together towards helping us identify students that will be worthy of this diploma program. They're not going to compete against each other necessarily, but they will help each other out. And again, we'll be able to get fundable, stackable credentials for them, as well as the metric of $38,000 per diploma granted or conferred.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, sir.
Regent Loeb?
So, yeah, I just want to clarify that, that, so before, we, we had a GED program, where they would do that separately from their, from their certificate or their degree program, or they would do it before their degree program if they were doing credit. Now we have a, this is a actual high school program, so they can come back, finish high school while they're getting their certificate at the same time?
Correct, yes. They got to be doing it concurrently.
Okay. And the idea, the state wants to pilot this, and the idea is if it goes well, they're going to make it permanent and roll it out across everybody.
That's the idea. They would roll it out or make it more available to other colleges.
And so, I mean, I, I think we, we need to make sure that we are, you know, I think it's fantastic, but I think we need to make sure we accurately gauge how much it's costing to run the thing, so we can give that back to them, and then they can, if it goes well.
Yes, sir.
They can, they've got some good data on how much they should give everybody to do it. Because I, I think that's a great idea. I think it's wonderful. Thank you.
The state's interested in scaling as well. That means resources behind it, ideally, but we'll, we'll certainly watch for that.
But it's nice that we get to be the, one of the five that gets a head start.
You saw that list of five. That's a very prestigious group here in the state of Texas.
Yes, it is.
We're smack dab in the middle of it.
I was going to, I was going to mention that all, the other four are all very large colleges. We're the only large college in the group. Those other are considered the very large college group, our metro partners. I do have a question about the students. How do we identify, or how do people apply? What is the process to identify the 50 students who would participate in this program?
Well, again, we are going to hire a career navigator, number one. And that navigator's position will encompass to help and work with our continuing education department, and work also with our respective Student Affairs side of the, of the House to identify, again, because the idea, it has to be Delmar students. So, so we'll work, and, and we do allow students, especially through our GED program, they did come into us, and they are working on career technical education programs most of the time, not all the time, but most of the time. And so we will decipher which ones are going to be best served by the diploma program. So the state's really given us a target of 50 students to meet within the 24 months that we have the grant. And so we believe that's very manageable and very attainable at the same time. But the process will, will be pretty much done through our continuing education realms and through our adult education literacy realms, primarily.
So I guess that's where I'm confused. So a student with a GED could apply for this program, or would they do this instead of a GED?
Yeah, and there's where, I mean, we, we have Dean Benavides, who could probably talk more from her, her seat, or come onto the podium, but you want to, you want to?
Yes, so to clarify, Regent Scott, a student who comes in through the CTE program will apply for admissions through the regular application process, at which point they'll usually be denied because they don't have a high school diploma or GED. At that point, we partner with Dean Gracie Martinez, and she sends them a letter for an appeal. At that point, we will be in contact with them to offer them that. Usually, Dean Martinez and I negotiate, okay, we're going to agree that they're going to be co-enrolled, and, and she allows an exception for them to be entered into a Level One program. This, these programs are typically TSI waived, and so it's very similar to a program we had many years ago called Ability to Benefit. So it's similar to that, that the students will enter through Delmar College through the regular admissions process. And so a student who is coming to earn their GED would actually come through continuing education and apply for a GED there. So, yes, how will we determine the difference between a diploma or a GED? That's all going to be very specific to what pathway the student chooses. If they want a short-term credential or an ICLC, then we would encourage the student to pursue their GED through continuing education. If they want a stackable convertible credit matriculating program, then we'll refer them to the high school diploma program.
So we're, we're going to be needing to recruit these students fast.
Yes.
Yes.
Quickly, I should say, so that they can start this fall, and depending on what they want to do, they might need the full three semesters or more to get through the program.
Yes, ma'am. And in meeting with the five, or the four other partners last week and the coordinating board, there's discussion right now that they're wanting to push the program to the spring. However, I stand firm that we can start the program in the fall, because that's what Delmar does. We don't wait. We get things done. And so we're hopeful that we can at least start with a few students. I want to, I just kind of want to find out what the students need, what this looks like, where the other colleges may not be starting till the spring, so for those reasons.
Well, congratulations. And please bring back kind of a progress report. We'd love to kind of see the dashboard on where we are in a few months, so we kind of see how it's moving, but congratulations.
Absolutely, and, and thanks to, to the team. Leonard's always sniffing these programs out and so forth, and we're always want to get out there at the forefront, and, as we have here. And, and to the team, we might be able to use that list of those 31 Freedom to Dream students out there, those that didn't qualify. See, those that don't qualify for this are always great. I mean, we're, we're not stopping there. We're going on to their Plan B, Plan C, Plan D options and so forth. And so this is another one there that we can be extrapolating from, depending on, on, well, their profiles and so forth. But we have that data. So we may very well have a significant portion of those 50
Yes.
in that CRM already.
Already, yes, captured, so. Thank you all so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. All right, we're going to ask Dr. Sanvi to come up and do our next report, Instructional Program Review Report. This is not an action item. This is to give us an overview for future action.
Hello, Madam Chair, Regents, Dr. Escamilla. So what I'm going to talk about today is sort of the two steps of the Instructional Program Review Process. I'm going to give you an overview of the process, and then a status on the program reviews that completed this year. So first, what is program review? We define it as a collaborative and systematic method of analyzing components of an instructional program with the intent of improving its quality. So we are collaborative in the fact that it's faculty-led with a lot of administrative support. We are systematic in that it complies with SACCOC standards. Listed here is a handful of standards. It touches a lot of aspects of SACCOC requirements. I want to call out 8.1 and 8.2A, because we'll be reporting those on the fifth-year report. This process is also systematic in that it occurs on a five-year process and a five-year cycle. And so we've got programs who are constantly preparing for just completing their instructional program review. So here's some insight into the process. The first thing that happens is programs will create a committee. Usually, that's faculty. Depending on the type of program, that could also include former students. It could include industry partners. They'll intend an orientation and get lots of support from the Office of Institutional Effectiveness and Academics. That comes with faculty assessment mentors who are on staff, ready to support. They'll receive and analyze data and information from the Office of Institutional Research and Analytics, led by Sue Schill Palamoni and his team. They'll take all that information, and they'll write a report with analysis of their program, and they'll include action plans, goals going forward. They'll submit to their department chairs, who will review, give feedback, then they'll hand it off to their divisional deans, who will review and give feedback, and then it gets to Dr. John DeHalcum for her final decision. And then they achieve continuous improvement. They start making changes, and then after five years, they repeat the cycle. So the whole cycle includes seven core criteria, which I'll discuss over the next two slides. I'll tell you, it's, it's a lot of work. It's a lot of work. The entire process usually lasts about 12 months. So the first criteria is a review of the assessment processes. So on an annual basis, programs will look at program student learning outcomes. They will analyze how their students are performing in the classroom. And so they'll take five years of that information to look at trends, to find out ways that they could improve, places of high achievement. They'll also look at general education, core objectives, and take a look at the processes for understanding all these things. The next criteria is faculty support of program learning. So that includes discussion of instructional support activities and student satisfaction surveys, which provide really good insight to these programs on how they're doing from the perspective of the student. Those are deployed, again, we get support from institutional research and analytics. The next criteria is curriculum integration and mobility. So that's a consideration of program curriculum in comparison to other programs within the college. The curriculum mobility is what students do, how they do when they transfer to a four-year institution. Student educational intent takes a look at post-completion outcomes. We look at job placement rates, and we look at which institutions students transfer to, and how successful they are when they get there. The final three core criteria include effective personnel utilization, which is exactly as it sounds. It's a close look at the responsibilities of faculty in terms of their teaching load, their advising load, what kind of professional development opportunities they participate in. Cost effectiveness, resource utilization, operating budget, and then finally, strategic advantage, which is a really great opportunity for programs to do a SWOT analysis, and then to define their role in fulfilling a unique community need. So after all this is done, and it gets passed through the department chairs, the divisional deans, and Dr. Halcum, we get four possible outcomes. A vast majority of our programs get a positive outcome. So what that means is you schedule your next five-year review. In the meantime, give us a two-year report, letting us know where you are in achieving the goals you set. Smaller number end up with a conditional report, a conditional status. What that means is we've identified some places that need a little extra focus, so instead of a two-year report, let's follow up in one year. Let us know how you're doing. Probationary is rare, but that indicates an intent to terminate the program. You've got one year to, to get things back on track, or we're going to start talking about terminating. Finally, termination happens only after they've experienced either conditional or probationary status, and things just didn't get better. And so that's whenever we start discussing termination. I'm sorry? We've done it. We've done it. And, and what's important to, to keep in mind here, termination could happen because job opportunities declined in the area. It could happen because interest in the program changed over the years. Termination is a big scary word, but it's, I don't want you to think it's because faculty weren't doing a good job, because students weren't being successful. It just wasn't a program that was doing what it needed to do for us anymore. So what we have here is the status report of our collection. It's usually 12 to 15 programs. So this list at the top is positive status. I want to call out every program on this list is an associate's degree or more. So for an example, I'm sorry, everyone has an associate's degree with the exception of cosmetology. That associate's degree is about to launch, but it hasn't yet, so that's a Level One certificate. Everything else on the list, for example, culinary arts and hospitality management, that's multiple associates of applied science degrees, and then there's also some certificates in there. So when we say program review, we're looking at a suite of programs, not individual awards. At the very bottom, we have the pending completion list, so computer programming is still working on their, their, completing and submitting their report. Any questions?
So you noted the SACCOC criteria for this process.
Yes.
Now there's state law that's going to be imposed on program review as well?
It's going to look a little bit different. But yes, they, there's going to be more considerations. This is a very robust process. We're going to be able to give you probably more information than you, than you need to make decisions about what happens with program review.
So yes, our program is way deeper and broader than what the state is applying, so I do not, when I saw that developing from the state legislature, I wasn't worried at all. I'm like, the level of work that takes place here. And Regent Kelly, we've asked, you've asked about this in the past, about, you know, and I was so anxious to get this report out there, but the depth here and the breadth here is immense, and it's a, it's a constant. It's a constant. And when we go to our five-year reviews, and primarily our 10-year reviews is where they take the deep dive on this, the decennial reports for reaffirmation of accreditation, I am always most confident, confident in this.
Nice for Delmar to be in the vanguard.
Dr. Babaly?
Dr. Sanvi, last time, we had a hallway conversation, very briefly on this, but, so how does the federal laws, or the environment at the White House, the current administration, going to impact SACs? And then how it, in turn, do you see the repercussions, positive and negative? What, what are your thoughts on that?
So I think that program review is one aspect where it will be supported, celebrated, considering our current political climate. What program review does is a deep dive into every aspect of a program to determine, are we getting a return? How are we doing? If things are not to the standard we expect them to be, what are we doing to fix it? So it really is a lot of focus on return on investment. So I, I think this is a great program that, that's going to, to be, it's not going to go anywhere. If anything, I, I foresee more legislative reaction, sort of like Senate Bill 37, where there's going to be more requirements for making sure the programs we have are of quality and, and doing what they need to do for students.
Even SACCOC, even with, with that standard, and with those principles that are, that apply with this, we're going to do this anyway. This is the way we do business. And so they can, you know, the, the feds and the state can, can do whatever they're doing. This is way greater than any of them can ask for. And so we'll continue to stay the course, and then apply their new rules, laws, regulations, whatever it may be, and we'll move on. But this is our standard here, and this is what keeps the curriculum the way, you know, at the, at the high level that it's at.
Second question. So in the program reviews, I don't see the mentioning of nursing. Where, does it fall under?
Good question. So what you see here is, is just, every year, it's about 12 or 15 programs that go through the five-year process. But the programs are only every five years. So we get about a fifth of the programs every year going through review. So program, you said nursing, I think they're up maybe in about two years.
How long is one of the finished reports?
I'm so glad you asked. Our average last year was about 90 pages.
Okay. You know, I, I think the legislature, you know, I, I, this is wonderful. It's a great professional process. I think, you know, they, they've said they want this information, so I would suggest that we take the last five years, because we're on a five-year cycle.
Okay.
We print them all out, a copy of each one.
Okay.
And we hand-deliver it to their offices in Austin. And that way, they have all the same information that we have, and they can tell what And that way, they have all the same information that we have, and they can tell what a great job that we are doing, making sure that the taxpayers are getting good value for their money, and our students are getting good value for their tuition. And then, you know, if they have any questions about the contents of any of the reports, they can call us and ask us.
Thank you, Mr. Loeb. Any questions? Give me questions, sir.
And Mr. Loeb is going to pay for the U-Haul that is up there.
I would just point out, we have a, we have a training truck.
That's true.
And we could incorporate somebody getting their on-the-road miles in delivery.
Thank you.
I'll go up and deliver if, I'd love to ride up.
Are you contemplating that they'll report to us if they've read those reports?
I just want to make sure they have them.
Thank you, Mr. Loeb. Mr. Rivera, did you have something?
Dr. Sami and I have talked about this. I mean, the other thing we're keeping our eye on is the discussion about an alternate accreditation path. That, we need to keep our eyes on that, is, you know. Yeah. And so, you know, the proposal that's still being discussed, and I know it even from the law school world, where the ABA, for example, is being, you know, attacked, and so keep, you know, stay tuned, because there are forces out there that if they had their way, they'd come up with something entirely different. And we'll see.
Is it also not true, and I'm not sure if this is, who this is for, but the program reviews we have done are wonderful and cover topics that we believe are important to the education of our students. Are we not, though, at least watching, or if not somewhat concerned, about some of the metrics that perhaps we don't think are as relevant to what we're trying to do, that we may not currently measure?
Dr. Sami, your opinion?
We, so this is a fluid process. I mean, we've got established criteria, but every year we look at it, and we make little tweaks, updates, changes. I work closely with Sushil and his folks in terms of institutional research and analytics to get the data packets together, and we talk often. Is there something we can add? Is there something we should remove? And so we can, we have a structure, but it gets tweaked. It's not the same as it was last year or the year before. So if things need to be added, if we need to change things, that's something that we do.
Yeah. My concern is about politicians adding things.
I've not seen any metrics that really stick out, that are so drastically even different. I don't see them. I mean, they're so relatively shallow compared to what we have. I, I mean, my, Dr., I'm going to see, Dr. Halcum's not here, but Lenore, are you seeing anything different?
Every SACs review that we've had has commented on the extensive quality of our program review system, process. This really stands out statewide, as far as complete. I was going to add, like, the data set that is done on every program by institutional research is almost 100 pages. And that's in addition to the 90-page report, you know, so the-
That means that we're at 13,000 pages per legislative.
So you're looking at extensive data. You could almost take any point along the way. I mean, they get down into head count per section, workload, resources, grades, I mean, everything is looked at in that program, in that data set.
I would use, Regent Everett, I would, I would use Senate Bill 37 as an example. You know, the things that they've put across, you know, that they're still trying to communicate to us, and that are still developing, are even, for the most part, less than what we're already doing with shared government. It's a comparable at this point. Now, they send up a red flag, or if I find a red flag, I will come back to you ASAP and say, whoa, this is different. The thing would be, well, I don't want to get out there too far ahead, but we'll get back with you if anything comes up.
Any other questions or comments? Thanks, Dr. Sami.
Yes, thank you.
All right. We will look at our pending items for upcoming board meetings. We've already discussed our calendar, that we won't have a regular board meeting in July, so the workshop that we have in late July, any potential special items that get, might get added to that. In August, at our regular board meeting, we will have our quarterly reports, as well as an internal audit report to the board, and another legislative and House Bill 8 update, kind of based on current information there. Any questions about our pending items list? Seeing none, we will look at our consent agenda. We have three items for consent. We have minutes, investment report, and a quarterly financial report. Do any of those items need to get pulled for separate consideration? Seeing none, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda? I think Mr. Krul made the motion, and Dr. Beverly made the second. Whew, I'm going to-
I'll let him have it.
I'm going to let him have it. Any questions or comments? Is there any public comment on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of adoption of the consent agenda, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign, that motion passes unanimously. Our regular agenda item, number four, Mr. Ali Kaladuz, I'm going to get it right, I'm going to practice it, I swear, is going to talk to us about some policy revisions.
Hello again, Regents. Today I am bringing to you for consideration a revamp of the college's existing network and computer use policy. This is a policy that outlines for students, faculty, and staff what the appropriate uses of information resources like computers, the internet, Wi-Fi, and so forth. We've gone through, we've done a fairly thorough revision of this policy and added quite a bit to it, and the reason for that is to address some updated requirements and best practices that have developed since this original policy was drafted. Specifically, we're looking to align with the Texas Administrative Code, Chapter 202, mandates that have come now from the State of Texas Governor's Office in terms of prohibited technologies, and then best practices that we derive from the Department of Information Resources, or DIR. I'm not going to go through the entire policy, because it's fairly verbose, and I think you'd get very bored, but the key sections that I'd like to share with you is that this policy now outlines explicitly roles and responsibilities for information resource owners and users. Those are folks, for instance, that are safeguarding student data in our SIS, or in our learning management system. There's some clarification on guidance on how we monitor our network to look at activity, things like the use of optical and detachable media, like USB drives, and the risk inherent in that. We've added provisions for data classification, which is now a state requirement, prohibited technology, which is now a state requirement, and then one of the more recent developments, artificial intelligence tools, and guidelines for their usage on campus. We've also included an explicit exceptions clause based on risk, in concordance with the various governing councils, that gives either myself, or ultimately Dr. Eskamia, when it comes to prohibited technologies, the ability to grant an exception from something that is prescriptively prohibited inside of the policy. So I'd like to request that the board consider adoption of this policy for Delmar College. And I'm happy to take any questions on the body of the policy or provisions.
Thank you very much, Ali. So just for clarification, we are adopting the blue, the B policies, which are board policies. The A policies are provided for, as says in FYI, because those are ones that Dr. Eskamia and staff can change, and then report to us any changes in those administrative policies. But we do not approve the A policies. Any questions for Ali? David?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, sir. That was no question, but I appreciate the motion. You jumped in there fast. Is there, second by Dr. Beverly, I heard first. Is there any public comment on this item? Before we vote, I just want to say thank you. I know this was a tremendous amount of work, but it probably helps that you could just, like, just red-line out all the old stuff and just write in what you wanted. Thanks for doing that, as opposed to making us try to decipher what you were keeping and what you were moving out of the way.
Definitely.
Seeing no public comment, and no other questions from the board, all those in favor of adoption of the B policy on technology, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign, that motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
And Mr. Strabos, we didn't get you last meeting. You're just about an every-meeting person, but I don't think you did anything-
I have an agenda session.
Oh, that's right.
Try to have something.
All right, you're my, you're my, like, you're my, the last agenda item every-
It's planned that way. So our State Energy Conservation Office loan has been approved. We had a kickoff meeting yesterday. As part of the implementation of that, there's a certain amount of documentation that's done in the appropriate way, and documented in the appropriate way. The Texas Engineering Experiment Station has a child organization called the Energy Systems Laboratory, and we're asking for this discussion approval, discussion and action on a master interlocal agreement for energy services with the Texas A&amp;M Energy Experiment Station. And so the CECO loan's been approved, and so in this case, this is a master agreement. There are no obligation funds, there are separate work orders for specific work assignments. Some of the services that can be performed is that assist the college, Delmar, with identifying and/or analyzing potential measures which may reduce college energy costs, including continuous commissioning of existing buildings, energy use, tracking and analysis, provide expertise and assistance with the continuous commissioning of various energy conservation measures of projects, provide energy efficient design and review of capital improvement projects, and other services as needed. Recommended for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Strabos. Any questions for Mr. Strabos? Is there a motion? Yes, sir.
Yes, the, the low-cost loan, the CECO loan, is, does that have any time limit on it as far as-
We met yesterday, and it has a one-year time limit on it, but it can be extended. And so one of the projects specifically is installation, another chiller.
So, so for example, you could engage the A&amp;M extension to do some kind of a study, and then as a result of that would be some project that would come out of it that would be eligible for the loan?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Seems like a one-year is kind of a short timeframe that-
This is a five-year contract.
Oh, this is, well, but I mean the-
The CECO is one year, yes, sir.
But the CECO is one year with one-year extension, so-
It is one year, and if we do not have the project complete, we ask for an extension.
All right, so, so it seems to me like the ability to contract and complete $6 million worth of energy work in one year is pretty aggressive.
Yes, it is.
Good luck.
I know I have your support. Thank you.
All right, is there a motion to approve? Thank you, Mr. Kelly, second by Carl. Any other discussion on that motion? Is there any public comment on that motion? Seeing none, the motion to approve the master interlocal agreement for energy services at Texas A&amp;M Engineering Experiment Station, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign, that motion passes unanimously. All right, we're going to go back into closed session, under Texas Government Code 551.071, consultation with legal counsel, 551.087, deliberation regarding economic development, and 551.074A1, personal matters related to the evaluation of the college president, president's contract, and board self-evaluation. The time is 2:29 PM. We will take a short break before we go into the closed session room. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're coming back from closed session at 3:34 PM. Please note that Mr. Garza had to leave the meeting, and we do have a motion coming out of closed session. Mr. Kelly?
Yes. Based on our evaluation of the college president, I move that we issue a positive annual evaluation for Dr. Eskamia for fiscal year 2025, and proceed with payment of a performance bonus as previously approved by the board.
So second to that motion? Oh, second. Thank you, Dr. Beverly. Dr. Eskamia, we have conducted a thorough evaluation. I can say that, because I had to tally all the, all the results. And we just want to thank you for your continued leadership of Delmar College, for the stable hand at the helm, but also for, for your forward-thinking work, the work that you've done on behalf of the state, community college sector, the continued respect that you garner Delmar College, not just locally, but throughout the state and nation, and then continuing to bring innovative ideas to the table, like the Freedom to Dream Tuition Waiver Program. We know that Delmar College is in good hands, so we want to say thank you very much. I'd like to invite other board members to make comments. Dr. Padami?
You know, it takes a visionary to take the callers from where it was 18 years ago till now. And, you know, you can see the leadership in Mark. Mark, you've been a good friend. Thank you for what you've done to the college.
Yes, Mr. Kelly?
Mark, in my experience, is a rare individual, can run an organization as large as Delmar College as effectively as you have. I'm glad we have you.
Heather Reeves, Dr. Beverly.
I'm impressed, Mark, with clarity of your thinking. I mean, you are very precise, very succinct, and you know the direction you're heading, and you have that conviction behind it. I mean, that's, that personality is infectious, and it inspires people. And having been on the other side of, you know, the four-year colleges and leadership in those positions there, I see your, your leadership is very unique, and I think you're very influential. You may not realize it here, but nationally, I've seen you, how you are perceived, how you're engaged with, with people around you in a very sincere, honest way. I mean, there are no, you know, pretenses. I think the clarity, that's the one which just comes at me when I see you leading in leadership position. So we are very proud of you, and we thank you very much for your example that you're setting here.
Mr. Loeb?
I remember my, a much younger self of mine, when you were much younger, when you first got hired, and I remember reading the article in the paper and saying, wow, that was a great hire. You know, just, somebody who grew up here, who came to this school, got a top-level education, worked professionally at other places, and then was coming home to, to work hard, and you've done that. I think, I think you've, you know, fundamentally altered the college for the better, and by doing that, you fundamentally altered how our community is going. And so I'm really proud to be a part of that. I think you've done a great job taking input from a lot of different people and turning that into opportunities for your staff to grow, and to work on things that are on the, on the leading edge. And so it's, it's really wonderful to watch it, and it's a great experience to be part of it. And so I just love going to work with you every day.
Regent Everett?
I think all of us in this room have seen organizations and institutions that do not function in the same healthy, constructive manner that we do here at Delmar, and that's largely, if not solely, due to your leadership, Mark. I think, too, many of us have worked with leaders, you know it when you see it, who are in it for themselves, who are egotistical, who are quick to take all the credit and none of the responsibility or blame. And one of the things I admire most about you, Mark, is that you are absolutely not that person. You, you are quick to share the credit, you are quick to take the blame. It has never been all about you or your ego. It has always been about the students and the faculty and the staff in this community. And I appreciate your honesty and your integrity and your service to this community.
Regent Krul?
Well, I just want to second all the comments that my fellow Regents have made. I think you've done a great job over the years, and I look forward to what's going to happen the next few years.
So in closing, the only employee that the Board of Regents evaluates and gets to talk about like this is Dr. Eskamia. But I want you to know that, that the evaluation process includes his leadership, and includes the people that he hires, and includes the work that you as administrators and that our faculty and staff do. Because the college is successful on multiple fronts, for us, starts with the man to my left. But we know that it takes you all as a team to work and to all row in the same direction, and to use the guiding stars that he has set forth, and that the board has set forth in terms of strategic, strategic vision for the college. But know that when we compliment and applaud, and, and give kudos to Dr. Eskamia, that we know that it is shared with all of you. we know that it is shared with all of you, and I want you to know that the board respects the work of those of you that, in the room that we get to work with on a regular basis, as well as those across our three campuses and our learning centers across the Coastal Bend. So I want to thank you all for the work that you do to support him and to support the vision of this board. So, would you like to say anything, Dr. Eskamia?
I, I would. Thank you, Madam Chair. Regents, thank you all for those most kind words. I try to earn it every day. I do not take it for granted. And I think, as I reflect on these times, during these times, it's, it's, I reflect on my biggest priority, and that's this group right here. Just what you said, Madam Chair, is taking care of everything that they need to get out there so that they can take care of the most precious resource, I think we can all agree on, and that is our student base. So we take care of our employees, so we take it, so that we can take, take care of our students. That's just the way it works. I keep it simple. I don't like to complicate things any more than they already are. But it's an honor to work for you all. It's a, it's a wonderful model that we have here. I think in so many ways, as I've traveled across the state and across the nation, we are the envy of so many, so many other colleges, no matter how big or how small, no matter rural, urban, or whatever. And I appreciate that. That is not an accident. I do not take it for granted, and I'll continue to give it my absolute all every day that I'm here, I promise. And thank you all so much.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion that was presented, I'm so sorry? Oh, thank you so much, because you know I'll forget that. Is there any public comment on the motion before the board? If not, all those in favor of the motion as presented, please raise your hand. Any opposed, same sign. That motion carries unanimously. Tell your mom we gave you a good report card this year.
I am going to.
Our last item on the agenda is calendaring for the rest of the summer. We are going to have our special called meeting on July 29th. At this point in time, we do not have any other called meetings that are planned for, until that meeting, we'll, we'll let you know if anything occurs that we, we feel like we can't, yeah, if we need a special called meeting before then, we'll let you know. An item not on the agenda in July, you've gotten an invitation to our Bachelor of Applied Science in Organizational Management and Leadership Summer Mixer at 6:00 PM on Thursday, July 10th, here at the Heritage Campus. If you're interested in attending that and talking to students and prospective students for our bachelor's program in OML, please let Delia know. In August, we will meet twice, our regular board meeting day on August 12th, and then again, our public hearing and adoption of the budget on August 26th. And our September board meeting is going to be the second Tuesday in September, whenever that is. With no other business to come before the board, we will adjourn this meeting at 3:44 PM.